Good evening, I'd like to call the Dover Select Board to Order on Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and six thirty P M. Public comments? I see none. Additions and or deletions to the agenda? Jeanette?
Um, you'll see I found that the first item under liquor control, the request to theater permits can be reviewed because um, the event is taking place in Bradenboro.
I read that, it was very confused why.
So we didn't really get the mission to apply through us. Bradenboro, so.
Alright, so that's, I had to just go to the front. Anything else? New business, discuss Deer Valley Stump Jumpers funding ideas. You assume that's why you hear mine?
That is. Would you like me to?
Absolutely, yes.
So for those of you that don't know me, my name is Michael Garber. I've lived in Dover and owned a home here since two thousand one. And I've been visiting valleys since the eighties. Within that time, I became part of a snowmobile community. And for the last ten years, I've been very active member. And for the past eight, I've been the vice president of Deer Valley Stump Jumpers, which is your local snowmobile club. I think the Stump Jumpers have an economic value to this community. I hope everyone can attest to that. If you need me to give you examples of why that is or how that is, please ask. Uh, but what I'd like to talk about is funding ideas that I have. So we can work together to make snowmobiling better in the valley and 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 support the club that supports the economy. I've had a few discussions with Shannon, and I just want to tell you some of the ideas that came out and will reject it. So so we can get past that. So we have a hundred person landowners dinner that happens in November. Those landowners come from all all of our areas, which include Stratton, Dover, Wilmington, uh, Marlborough. She felt that that did not come under the event jurisdiction of economic development, because it was too local oriented. I said, okay, let's try something else. We have picnics and barbecues that draw hundreds of people from from throughout the state and people come up from from their second homes also to support these events, or some, they're big events. And and those are only, to put numbers out there, two thousand dollar events, but she, of course, said that that also did not fall in line. So we kept going, and I talked about the trail work that that we do, and we do trail work on Dover properties. May it be Horace Hill, may it be old Cheney Brook, may it be the trails that you guys own on uh, on Hathaway. We've taken care of these trails for forever. And and when I see the town give monies to other private companies to maintain their properties, I I feel that that something should be should be worked out. We have some some big uh, expenses coming up here and over on private land as far as bridge building. Uh, and I know in the past, we we've done things, which is five years ago, it was pre-COVID, was the last time we asked for ten thousand dollars uh, for trail work that that we did, and for that trail work, we showed you the bills, everything is is hard goods. We're talking about culverts, excavators, maybe gasoline, and in those days, it was hay and seed. Now we're getting into bridges that we have to build with iron beams, so they're more expensive. I have an idea. And I and if you think my idea is not correct, I'd like to hear your ideas on a way we can work together. I I went to economic development and I said, you have this great do it program where businesses put up the first fifteen hundred, you support the next forty-five hundred, up to six thousand dollars, and they show the bills for windows or asphalt. I thought if the stump jumpers could somehow, not be part of the two, because we're not a business owner and we're not for profit, uh, we could somehow yearly show you where we spend the first fifteen hundred of the thirty-five hundred dollar excavator, as well as all the culvert pipe and or steel dealings that we're buying for land here in Dover, and maybe get a forty-five hundred dollar uh, not credit, but but grant from the town, and that could be a yearly thing going forward. That was my idea that I I could just as easily say, we have all these expenses, I we we we, this bridge that we're gonna build that leads right into Dover is gonna be a fifteen thousand dollar bridge. And of course, I say, huh, Dover knows about bridges, you have your own bridge problem, right? We can't patch them, we we need to build them correctly and get them done. So with that being said, I'd like to hear what you have to to say about constantly helping us.
I have a question before we get into the, what is your current funding sources? What is?
So so we have twelve hundred members, uh, so that's twelve hundred registered snowmobiles. Those snowmobiles pay vast, a hundred and fifty dollars for a vast uh, uh, ticket to ride on all the trails throughout Vermont. Twelve hundred members. We get thirty dollars back per member. So we work on a budget of about thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Thirty-six thousand, but most of that money goes straight back into our groomers. Our groomers cost us twenty thousand dollars a year to maintain and run. And the problem is, our rooms are aging out, and we really have no money. We we have a little money saved, and we're trying to save more money going forward. We have thirty thousand dollars saved for a three hundred thousand dollar groomer, which hopefully will fund somehow in the next five to ten years. But that that's how we uh, take the money and spend our own.
And so did you um, discuss your your plan or idea with Shannon?
Shannon says I have to come here.
Okay.
Shannon says.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, she's well aware of this whole situation.
Okay. Questions?
Shannon?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, so that's sort of correct. Um, so all of the things that Mike has brought to us just don't fall under any existing grant program that I have. They just don't. Um, so what Jeanette and I did say was um, to bring us uh, a list of what needs to happen, um, just like they've done in the past to come to the board for funding. We have maintenance funds available, we have other funds available, but um, I just don't have any existing program that any of this fits into. Um, so if there's work that needs to be done, tell us what needs to be done and what it costs, and we can decide how much of that we can help them with.
Want to say something, Mike?
I I find that to be very variable. There's no hard numbers put in there, either a cap, I don't want to ask you for the money for the whole bridge. VAST is is giving us a grant for seven thousand of this fifteen thousand dollar bridge. So I I I'm not looking.
But there there aren't caps on our event program either, so people can come to us and ask for full funding for an event. Um, or they can ask for a portion of it, so not every program has that, and not every, it doesn't fit every situation. So that's why if something needs to happen, we want to support that work, but you have to tell us what you're looking for, so that we know how we can help you.
So specifically, Mike, are you looking for the balance of the money to to do the bridge?
That would be very helpful.
Can you put that down in writing?
Sure.
How much it is? And and send it to Shannon and and Shannon will forward it to the board. And we will discuss that. Yes.
I'll go finish your phone, sorry.
It doesn't seem to me as a completely unreasonable request. Yes, Sarah?
I was just gonna say, um, when you send the, submit, basically, you're gonna submit a proposal. And you're gonna have some, you're gonna have itemized estimates for the materials, and then if you're renting heavy equipment, there are some slips from those, just so that there's all kind, there's a lot of documentation of everything, because we do. Um, there have been times in the past that perhaps we haven't been as diligent about it, and that has come back, made some people very unhappy. So just saying, proactively get all that stuff into us at the same time, so that we can consider it and have all the backup we need, and obviously pictures of everything we've got.
Is that easier for you than putting me into some kind of do it, because that means every year I'm coming back in front of you?
I I think, for this person, I'd like you to come back, and and we we want to try to help, and absolutely, these are very important um, infrastructure for our snowmobile trains. But we would like to know what's what's needing to be fixed, particularly on the order of the bridge. Uh, I think that I personally would like to have you come in.
Yeah, yes.
I I think, yeah, to second that, I think it's practically, it's good, because we we start from scratch with a budget for the town for every year for all kinds of things, and so I think practically that makes the most sense, just in terms of operations. Uh, the question, I'm I'm trying to get my head around. It sounds to me like, Mike, your approach in talking to Shannon was try to fit this into one of the buckets we have within the economic development realm. Um, and I just want to be sure we're thinking of it the right way when Mike goes off and comes back. So I I guess, you know, I'm not sure, I don't, I I guess I'm not really up to speed on all the buckets and how we fit, but I would presume Shannon would make a recommendation to us. You know, yes or no with respect to, hey, this fits into bucket X, it meets the criteria for coming out of that.
Like the maintenance budget?
Yeah, whatever, okay, okay, good, I just want to make sure I understand, so that when it does come back, we know we're not thinking, unthinking of.
Dan?
So Dover Historical Society, which I'm the president of, every year, put in appropriation. Uh, the town has decided that it comes from the town, not from economic development. So when you put in a request for funding, then we find a place for it. So it's something that I do every year.
And that's voted on by the town, by the voters. Um, so, but I think that there's ways that the Economic Development Department, this is economic development. If you don't have a bridge, you can't hit them here. And I I get that, so uh, I think that it it it's infrastructure that is necessary to maintain our our snowmobile system. Sarah?
And I was just gonna say, I don't think it necessarily, we don't necessarily have to have a pre-lasered bucket to take the money from. Um, because we set things up that are going to be beneficial in a generic way to a multiple different businesses, you're kind of in a unique situation. And so I don't think we have to create a program just for this, or deny it because we don't have a program. I think we can go outside of the program parameter and and address this step.
Just so.
Hold on, Jeanette has his hand up. Okay, Mike?
Just so I'll put, so it's not coming from economic development. It's coming from the board, or it's coming from an appropriation that the town votes on every year?
If it's Sarah?
I'm thinking it comes from economic development, but any money spent in economic development is approved by the board. That's what I'm.
Mm-hmm.
Are we?
Yeah.
Jean? I'm assuming the Stump Jumpers are five oh one C three?
Are you a five oh one C three?
We're a five oh one C. We we don't get to write off taxes, we don't the the three is tougher to get. Most of the clubs are not at that level.
Yeah.
And on five oh one street are differently under the economic development guidelines? Think I read that someplace?
There's some discretionary, and and Shannon will speak to it.
Yep, um, so our existing, all of our existing grant programs, non-for-profits are uh, on a case-by-case basis. So this is a little different, um, and also why it didn't really fit in anything existing. Um, my feelings are uh, for things like this, for maintenance, um, for bridge projects, special things like this, that make a proposal, bring it to us, and we can see how we can help you. Um, I did talk to Mike about appropriations and what that process is, um, for like general budget help. Um, because this is something that we should be supporting as a town, however we do that. Um, it's just um, a little different. So the non-for-profit, um, that's on all of our existing grant programs, so DO-IT, DASP, signage, DTAP. Um, but not for things like this, where we need to do perform maintenance or trail work within the town.
Yes.
Mike, is, what's the urgency of these things? Are these, I mean, if you don't have this till next year, is that functional problem?
It's being done after later to?
Being done after what? This is, okay.
Um, I think that the last time we gave money for trail work to the Stump Jumpers, it came from economic development.
If I, I think.
Yeah, we've given.
Correct.
Yeah, yes, so we've done this, we've given money.
That's enough.
Yes. So.
And personally, I'd rather dip from that bucket than else the jump stairs.
We put porta-potties at WB, or basically snowmobile, so they stop peeing on the building.
Something.
We we give money, but I think, you know, listening to the whole conversations is you want like to have the money, but I mean, no, 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 just listen to me now. You want a mechanism to get the money, but this is the mechanism. So that it's all done on the right side, everyone knows what's going on, as opposed to just giving money underneath and no one knowing what you're doing with it. So this is something that you're gonna have to probably do each year. I think one thing you could do is you could do an appropriation through the town, and ask that way, and then we can vote on.
So you have petition that as well?
Right.
To get on the appropriation list the first time.
That's, I think that's a great way, because you are a huge part of the community that we could vote on at town meeting, and then that would be, once you get voted on that once, and that's usually each year you just put in, we put in the appropriations, and you'd get X amount of money each year to use towards the snowmobiles. And that also, I'll be honest with you, that would be very helpful, because a lot of the second homeowners, that's a way for them to get some of their money back from their taxes. So that would be huge for the organization.
But it is property taxes versus local option.
Right, that's property tax, where you're coming right now, we're gonna use it on the economic development. Because we have to have the transparency, we've, we don't have anything budgeted to give you snowmobile money out of the town budget, but we have the discretionary to help out with different programs at the economic development. That make sense?
Patrick.
Just a very quick question, so it's actually, glad Joe, something you said, just kind of wrapped in thought, so it's actually with two separate things you're looking at. One is, we have an immediate, the second thing you're asking is, gee, on a recurring basis, we'd like to be able to get a certain amount of money from the town, whatever that is.
I don't know that he asked that, that was suggested to him.
Oh.
I don't know that he made that request.
I think I think you did, though, you said, you know, like, well, we'd like to get some.
Well, Dan, Dan brought it up, Shannon and I have talked about it, but we do have the immediate need, and I would have to go through Shannon to figure out how to get on the town.
Or right.
And.
You, if if you wanted appropriation, you should probably speak with Ken. Right. Okay, so.
First of all.
Dan?
And you probably have in your head an idea how much it takes every year to do something, with the exception of something like the bridge falling down. You know, so you need X amount.
Just a question.
Yeah.
The maintenance on Horace Hill, is that an appropriation order?
It's town-owned property.
It's town property.
It's it's in a bunch, like, excuse me, we're all talking, sorry, it's town-owned property, it's budgeted to have maintenance number every year.
So, sort of, I'm not gonna agree with you on that, but.
Okay.
Because we don't have, we're just spending money to weed whack it for a tournament, we didn't expect that.
There's other things that, that.
Well.
Yes, Shannon, as well.
Um, so there's two things, so there is in the one percent budget, which I know we're all mixing terms here, but um, we do budget for trails maintenance, there is a line there, so that can be used for a variety of different things. Um, but then also some maintenance of town-owned property um, is budgeted through highway. Um, so it just depends on on what it is, but we've been increasing that trails maintenance line in the economic development budget as we've developed more things. Um, so that's where, if you brought the bridge um, project and the select board approved money, that is where it would come from. It would be one percent funds, and it would come out of that line item.
The town is gonna ask me, if I'm maintaining town property, will it come out of economic development?
Uh, I'm now confused what you just asked, did you say it?
If you guys are paying for maintenance of your properties.
Of the town's property.
Of the town property through economic development. Is that where I should be looking for that money from?
I think if you want funding this year, that's where you're gonna have to get the money from.
What I'm saying, as far as appropriations.
So going forward, if you want to petition and have it as a warrant article at town meeting, then you can do that, and then it would come out of taxpayer, out of local property taxes. So there's two routes, that one's gonna take a while, because the money would, it won't be until July of twenty twenty-six that any of that money could be available. But if you want to do this now, you need to do the the steps we've laid out, for you to put together a a proposal. Show us how much revenue you're getting from, you know, VAST, and present it first to Shannon, and she'll bring it to us.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, now, we're, I see a need, I think the board says need. Uh, so we want to help you, but we, if you want money in this fiscal year, this is the way you're gonna get it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Which could be at the next meeting.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Throw it out.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Close suggestion.
Yes. All right, next, economic development, Shannon's backup, twenty twenty-five DTAP program application.
Yep, um, so I sent this out uh, last week, um, no real changes in the program, no like language changes or guidelines or anything, just cleaning up dates. Um, and um, some formatting, but that's really it.
Anyone have any questions or problems? Does somebody want to make a motion to accept the cleaned up DTAP?
Uh, I made a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-five DTAP Dover Technical Assistance Program Application Form is submitted.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else, Shannon?
Nope, thank you.
No, Joe, hold on.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
How's the uh, the registry going for our vacation homes?
For our short-term rentals, um, we are just under two hundred, um, so probably a little closer. Um, I think probably around forty-ish percent, um, still cleaning up some properties that, for whatever reason, didn't make it into the system. Um, and I'm feeling fairly confident, as I knock on wood, that um, I'll be able to start reaching out to people who have not completed that yet individually, um, to look through that. So I have a call with the website provider um, later this week, uh, just to see where we're at and how things are going. Um, and hopefully get uh, the rest of those properties registered shortly.
Anything else for Shannon? Thank you, thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving on to the Westover Fire Department, reviewed quotes for mold remediation at the fire station. There's two quotes. One from Surf Pro for eighteen thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-eight cents, and one from RSI Floors and Walls, fifteen thousand seven thirty-nine point three nine. Any?
Travis's.
Travis.
Yes. I uh, I reached out and got some current quotes finally from both companies. This was scheduled to be in our budget, I believe, for the last two, two years. Um, we we need to do it. Um, I think we should, hi, they both are reputable companies, they do, both have done a lot of work in the valley. Um, I think we should go with the cheapest quote from RSI Floors and Walls, and then we can get moving on that project.
Clara, did we, did they provide, or did you check any references, or are you basing it on just?
No, they they provided all references.
And they're all checked out?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Make a motion that we authorize Travis to contract with RSI Floors and Walls for the mold remediation at the firehouse in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars, thirty-nine cents.
But I can, with the money coming from the Capitol Building fund?
Correct.
Thank you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, we have the Linda up in the assessor's office. We have an arrow in a mission, forty-seven Locust Heights, East Dover.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, let's see, so oh, sorry, my dog is hearing everything. Um, the numbers that I sent to you are going to be different. Um.
What, so the the paper report we have here is not correct?
Correct, I just finished with it today. Um, the twenty, I had the property owner come in and to make sure that the information was correct. Um, the twenty twenty-five value was seven twenty-eight five. The new value was four eighty-two five. A difference of two hundred and forty-six thousand. And tax amount is six thousand two hundred and twenty-seven.
Wow. So.
Right. Do you have a new letter that designed?
Do you have a new letter to sign, Linda?
I gave, well, I gave Jeanette the one that I sent you all. I did not write a new one. Um, I was just thinking you could cross out those numbers and write the ones I just gave you. Or is that not appropriate? This, this goes in the um, in the vault with the grand list. It's the only place nobody even ever looks at it, seriously. Um, I
I don't think I want, I don't think we should just cross out these numbers, I think we should have a document with the correct numbers on.
Okay.
That's my feeling, rest of the board?
I I think, yeah. For the amount of work it would take to create a clean document, it's well worth it.
Shoot.
I have a question.
Hold on, hold on. No, I was just trying to find the one that you'd sent me, Linda.
Um.
I could change the numbers to again. But.
I left, yeah, didn't I leave it with you yesterday?
This one right here, like that that I have?
You left me one.
It's on.
Wrong.
Yeah.
Well, we kind of warned this too, I'm just gonna say, for the taxpayers, do we need to warn again?
Yeah, well.
Normally.
I'm sorry, what?
I I'd like to put the actual amount uh, of the era, of the era on the.
Like the warning bill's first.
Does this have to be done today? Can we wait two weeks?
Um, he was hoping not, um, but um, if changes are needed to be made, then uh, I'll have more next time, wait a minute.
I'm not.
Yes.
I I I'm not comfortable voting on, I I have the sense that there's not a lot of people that are comfortable voting on something that's appropriately warned and.
Yes.
Yeah. So the the next meeting on the second, um, I'll just tell him uh, that it'll go in for then.
And I, and I'd like, um, when we warn it, you're gonna have more next time, you said?
Big difference.
A couple, yeah.
Big difference.
Huh, so I would like the the amount of each one on the warning as well. How much, how much town taxes, how much in taxes the town is not gonna receive because of the era?
Okay.
Yes, Joe?
I would like an explanation of why it's such a big difference, and, you know, obviously, I spoke to you a little bit on Monday about it. It would have been nice again not to spend so much time on it, but we would have done this previous, but we can't change that, but I would like to try to just know a little bit better why this happened.
Uh, there was, because the plans were really difficult to work with. Um, and I noticed the guys from the reappraisal company did the same exact thing. There was um, some area that we thought was a half-story. There was, um, some area that we thought was a half-story. It turned out. To, it's not usable space, it's just trusses. So I took that off. So that made a big difference. Um. And. That's it. I don't know what more I can say. It was correcting, uh. Square feet and the, um. That half-story.
Did, did you go up and inspect the property and not see that there was no space up there, or is that, that something that occurred?
I, I went up, uh. Last week, yeah. He. He was sent, last year, he was sent a change of appraisal notice. This year, they were sent a change of appraisal notice. According to him. They never received anything.
And it wasn't returned to you?
Uh.
The change of appraisal notice.
Actually. There were some that had. New addresses that sort of crossed, um. And the one thing I neglected to do was check the certificate of mailing to make sure that. That's usually something I do, to make sure that they actually, that it actually was mailed when I said it was mailed. I mean, I'm responsible for sending, as we all are, to the last known address. Um. It's odd that people never get their change of appraisal notices, but they always get the tax bill.
Eric, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just a little confused because the, the letter says there were more finished square feet than actual.
Yes.
He would feel like that meant they had a higher value. Am I reading that wrong?
They did have a higher value.
But you're, but you just took off two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of their value.
Right, so it's now. Whatever that four hundred thousand dollar value was.
Right, but how did the value go down if the number of square feet increased?
No.
I think, I think that's a grammatical thing.
The square feet decreased.
It, oh, there were less finished square feet than actual.
Oh, I'm, I, sorry, that, I could, there were more square feet in the original value. Than actual.
So you value, you, you created a valuation based on a certain amount of square feet, and the actual turned out to be less than that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that needs to be corrected as well.
Yeah, because.
Well, that's just how you read it. It's.
No.
One opinion, I read it exactly what I did. There were more than what was actually there.
I would, I would ask you to put a few more sentences in there so that it's very explicit, because. I wasn't the only person who misread it, and so if it's going to be, if it's going to be inexact. To the point where two different people can come up with two different readings of it, perhaps being a little bit more, just for the sake of being very clear would be good.
Hey.
Great. Uh, so we're, we're gonna push this to the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, and we'll warn the actual numbers of, um, errors and omissions in the morning. And. Yes.
And you said there were more to come? Do you have any idea how many?
You're muted, Linda.
Yeah, Linda, you muted yourself.
One that I got today. Um. It's the time of year, between now and December. Um, I do, I do have one thing to say that I really was not happy. That Joe spoke to the property owner saying this wasn't the best time, best way to do this. That wasn't his problem. An error and omission is something that I did wrong, or I forgot. I just thought it was inappropriate. That's all I wanted.
I'm, I'm gonna. In the conversation we're having though, and this conversation that we're having right now, Linda. Is a combination of things that you did not get proper paperwork that you could read properly. And then he came in with proper paperwork that you could read. That's what I was mentioning to him, that, you know, it'd been nice to have had this paperwork the correct way, as opposed to the other way. So my apologies if you took it wrong, as that we're spending not only your time, the board time. On something off of the original paperwork not being correct the way it should be, and that's basically what you're telling us. So that's what I was trying to say. I wasn't trying to say anything in a bad way, or that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
I'll reiterate that, that I don't kind of outspoken anything down there. My apologies.
Thank you.
We're, we're done with this for this, tonight. All right, we're gonna move on to the Board of Liquor Control. Thank you, Linda. Motion to go to the Board of Liquor Control. All in favor? Uh, we have one item, and number A has been struck from the, uh, agenda.
Uh, making motion, we approve the special event permit for the Wine and Harvest Festival on September twentieth for Vermont, Vermouth LLC and Watson Wheeler Cider LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? We're all good, all in favor? Motion to come out?
Motion to come out and deliver it out of, uh, Board of Liquor Control, sorry.
All in favor? We have the consent agenda. Approve the minutes of August fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve the minute of August fifth.
Let's check. All in favor?
Aye. Uh, motion to approve the warrants of August sixteenth for two hundred ninety thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Second by Patrick. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
You haven't finished looking at, no?
Sorry.
No, I think you should abstain.
Okay, why don't we just wait?
Okay.
Five minutes, and then we'll get through it.
Okay, we can get, while you're doing that, we'll, uh.
Whatever, hold on, then we'll come back.
Uh, FYI, planning commission meets August twenty-fifth at six thirty, Dover Watercast Forest meets. August twenty-seventh at five P M. Uh, the, the DRB meeting, August twenty-ninth, eight, at seven P M. Concerts in the park, the twentieth, Erica Reynolds Band tomorrow, and it looks like it might rain, Shannon. Uh, bummer.
Yeah, well, we'll see for sure, but it doesn't look great.
Um, and August twenty-fourth at two P M, the last concert of the year, Three Way Street. Uh, there is training for local leaders. We have the things here if anybody's interested. Uh, reminder, September through November, and these are, these are very local. Williamsville. Wilmington, things like that. Um. And then we have town fair, August, October eighth, registration is open. And we have car about town fair, and it's in Burlington. Yes, Patrick.
Uh, just noting that Watercast Force will not be meeting next week.
Okay, no, we'll strike that. Okay, do we have any liaison reports?
Uh. Um, hmm, but.
No.
No, okay, I'm gonna say no.
Hmm, nothing that is.
No.
All right.
We're waiting for jokes. Patrick, when is the next?
Um, I think it will be in the second year. It'll be September ten. And then actually, while we're waiting, I, I can add one more news. So it's, um, September fifteenth through seventeenth. Uh, there's this flood planning charrette process. Uh, it'll be taken, but I think it'll be sent to the multi-town, uh, process. I think, uh, Sarah, you and I are supposed to participate, and I think McDonald, the planning commission is.
Right.
Participate also.
I'll have to see if my boss can give you some time.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll leave that to you to negotiate, so. I'm nervous toward the eight, so.
Okay, thanks.
I'm good. I'm signing as we speak, so.
All right, all in favor of the warrants? Thank you. Um, anything else? I don't, I'm not aware of an executive session.
Nope, not really.
All right, so I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven eleven.